This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. I'm happy that you're all here, and I'd like to say a special thank you to all of our guests this evening and those who are joining us via stream through Valley Media Works. Our next agenda item is, oh, I first have to ask, no, I'll do that next. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and today, instead of me joint-leading you in the Pledge of Allegiance, I have a few students joining us from, I will have them come up here to the podium and turn on that microphone and introduce yourselves, and then I'll look forward in having you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, well, I'm Tyler.
Let's stand up.
Yeah.
And what troop are you all with?
Well, I'm in Troop 124.
Okay.
We're in Troop 445 of Frontier Girls.
Awesome. And we have some DeLonge, Roosevelt, and Roosevelt representation. Awesome. So, whenever you're ready.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for joining us, and thanks for all that you do in our community. So let's give them a round of applause. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call for verification of quorum.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Harder. Commissioner Klinkhammer is absent. Commissioner Luganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Boo? Absent. Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move on to our public forum section of the evening. Is Board Docs running?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And, oh, okay, sounds good. In this section, all those who wish to speak and address the Board will have you come up to the podium. You'll have up to four minutes to address the Board, and we will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in this forum. Also, your comments will be, they will appear in our minutes. They will not be verbatim, but a summary, and your comments to the Board will be recorded on audio and video and in the public record in that way. So please, when I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. First up, we have John Drawbert.
My name is John Drawbert. My home address is 3697 South Elko Road, Fall Creek. My office address is 1200 Oakleaf Way in Altoona. Good evening to the Board members. Dr. Hardbeck, I'd like to speak to you about one of your agenda items tonight, and that is the issue of the athletic trainers. Just a brief introduction, you may have received a letter this weekend in your packet, but I moved here 32 years ago, finishing a fellowship in sports medicine in Salt Lake. Came here and I met with the School Board, the Superintendent. At that time, it was called the Athletic Council to determine the athletic issues, and we talked about providing an athletic trainer for these two schools in Eau Claire. Never had been done before. It was on my cost. The School Board agreed with it, and we started this program in 1986. We kept doing that. The athletic trainer went to the training room three or four days a week, and then also attended the events. This went on for many years. We added another athletic trainer, so each school had its own athletic trainer a couple times a week. And then 15 years ago, we added a grad assistant program, which is a real innovative program, where we put a grad assistant at each school, mostly at our cost. We put it, you guys put in a couple grand each to kind of share the skin a little bit, but then they had a supervising trainer as well as a grad assistant at each school. All the events got covered. Student athletes were seen. And this was done not as a self-referral mechanism, but as a community service, something we felt strongly about. There's three of us now in our group that are sports medicine specialists. We're all fellowship-trained experts in sports medicine. We've been doing this for 32 years. Roughly, we've contributed just under $2 million to the Eau Claire schools through our services, through the athletic training service, in addition to providing any type they need a donation in terms of athletic things like scoreboards, turf in the field, things like that. So we've done this. We've done it for a number of schools. It's been very successful. We've won a number of awards throughout the state for this, including the Athletic Directors' Distinguished Service Award 10 years ago for doing this. Then, a couple months ago, we received a request for proposal to provide athletic trainers to the school, which we thought was kind of interesting, that we're now having to do an RFP for something, a service that we've been providing free for 32 years. So, but anyway, we went ahead and filled this in, the RFP, and sent it back. Couple weeks later, we got another request for an RFP saying the first one didn't count. So we filled this in and sent it back. The second one was quite aggressive, actually, in terms of asking for certain hours for the athletic trainers, like 30 hours a week, two trainers every day at the school, three to four hours, stuff like that. More than any high school in the state has needed or will need. But we did it anyway. We said, "Fine." And then 10 days ago, we received an email saying that Marshville Clinic has been awarded the athletic training contract, which, and they've never done anything remotely similar to like this, this type of capacity. Somewhat shocking to us that after doing this for 32 years at roughly $2 million, we'd be notified in the email that the service that we've done, which has won all these different awards, is no longer needed. And I'm not criticizing the Board because I don't think you were part of it. My understanding is the second meeting for the RFP was interrupted, and somebody from the district said, "Hey, we've awarded the thing to the Marshville Clinic, so we don't need to talk about the RFP," and it never really even got discussed. And again, this is, I'm not criticizing, this is more of an education for the School Board. Got a unique perspective, and my wife's been on School Board for 15 years in Altoona. I realize the thankless hours that you put into this. But this process, it's all about the process at the School Board level. The process was broken. It's important for you to realize that this particular issue was not addressed right. The process broke. You need to find out why. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Jose Alvarez. I maybe said your last name wrong. I can't read it.
It's Jose Alberge. Yeah, thank you. I'm here to speak encouragingly of the dual immersion program, doing so from two points of reference. One, as a native bilingual speaker myself and immigrant. Secondly, however, as a faculty member from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire and Director of Undergraduate Studies, we get a lot of really good students at Eau Claire. Many of them are prepared students, and they do well, but we also have students who come in who have had in their lives exposure to some sort of enrichment. And these students are, they make their futures. They graduate with jobs. They are generally happier. Their levels of anxiety are low because of their sense of control of their options. And as a bilingual speaker myself, you know, I came to this country, and my parents worked very, very hard. In fact, they struggled with very little resource to ensure that my brother and I grew up speaking Spanish. And for them, it was a gift. It was a legacy. And I know that the question of resource is always a very real question and something that needs to be discussed, but when we see it as a gift that we can give as a community to an entire generation of students, I think this is a very important thing to consider. And I would hope that you see it in this way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Manny Fernandez.
Hi, I'm here to address the Board. I'm also with the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. I'm Director of the Latin American Studies Program, and I'm faculty with the Department of Languages and the Spanish Section, but I'll talk more as a parent of two kids who are in the Eau Claire Area School District. About 10 years ago, I started taking both my kids to a Japanese language school in the city. We've done that for 10 years, each Saturday, driving 90 miles, 90 minutes each way, so three hours total. And my kids are also, I speak Spanish to them, so they're trilingual, doing Japanese and Spanish. And about 10 years ago, I started having this guilt trip because, wow, why are my kids getting what I consider to be a gift, which is the gift of languages? And other kids in Eau Claire don't, so I would like to commend the Board for pursuing the dual-language immersion program, which you're currently pursuing, which I went to one of the listening sessions. I found it to be very well thought out, very well planned out. I strongly support it. I think it's a great benefit to the community. I'm pretty sure there's parents who would be very interested in pursuing this for students, and I think it's a great opportunity for many people to help their kids develop something which I think does no harm to any child. I don't think learning languages hurts any child. It hasn't hurt my kids. It hasn't hurt me. They're not perfect, but I don't think it's the learning of a language that has hurt them. And I grew up bilingual also. I have nieces who are bilingual, you know, perfectly fine, someone among them is a teacher. I think it's a great opportunity. It opens doors to them, and I strongly support the initiative of the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that closes our public forum section of the meeting and moves on to our Board Administrative Reports. Superintendent's report.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming School Board events. On June 6th at 7:00 PM, McKinley will have their competency graduation, and that will be celebrated at DeLonge. On June 13th at 1:00 PM in the Administration Building, the Demographic Trends Work Group will meet. On June 13th at 4:00 PM in the Administration Building, the LEAP Committee will meet. And on July 23rd, Policy and Governance will meet in the morning at 8:45, followed by a School Board meeting in the evening at 7:00 PM, and both of those meetings will be held in the Administration Building. So tonight, we have a few things to celebrate and recognize. I wanted the Board to know and the audience that the Eau Claire Area School District has been selected to receive an ABCs for Healthy Communities grant through the Marshville Clinic Health System and Security Health Plan. The grant was in the amount of $41,530, and it will be used to train 10 district staff and five community members in mental health first aid. Once trained, these trainers will then work with staff in all ECASD schools to help meet student mental health needs. Mental health first aid provides a common language regarding mental wellness and well-being for youth, and expands emotional supports for students to the entire school community, which extends beyond supports that are typically provided by counselors and social workers. Participants learn the risk factors and warning signs of a variety of mental health challenges common among adolescents. We are very grateful for this grant. This meets significantly growing need in our school district, and we look forward to the training that will be provided through this grant. We have some fourth grade writing students here that recently were recognized for the Golden Key Fourth Grade Writing Contest. And the first place went to Megan Drolinger. She wrote "The Golden Key to Freedom," and she's in Ms. Doolman's class at Sam Davy Elementary. And she was not able to be here tonight, but we want to recognize her anyway. Second place went to Suzie Ma, and she wrote "A Mysterious World." She's from Mrs. Grace's class at Robbins Elementary, and I don't know if she was able to make it or not. Not seeing her. And then our third place went to Sushi Ocean Mua, who wrote "The Pencil and the Box" from Ms. Jansen's class, and she's at Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School, and I believe she is here tonight. So, is she here? No? Oh, okay. Well, we congratulate these students, and yes, she told us she was coming, so. The next thing that we have is, we have five teams from the district represented the State of Wisconsin at the World Finals Odyssey of the Mind Tournament at Iowa State University. And we have some of those representatives there. So could you stand, please? And I'll ask you to remain standing because these students are from Robbins, South, Roosevelt, and the Chippewa Valley Montessori. They competed with approximately 830 other teams from around the United States and 16 foreign countries in both long-term and spontaneous problem-solving. The teams all placed in the top 30. They also helped staff a booth at the Creative Festival in which remote-controlled mice had to maneuver a maze to get to the cheese, traded pins and hats, and met new friends, took classes sponsored by NASA and Second City Improv. They spent time enjoying the recreation facilities at Iowa State and got to experience some college dorm life. So, thank you for your representation for the state and also for the Eau Claire Area School District. We're very, very pleased for you.[945.07][945.07](Applause).
Would you like me to speak?
Sure.
So tonight, we have a special recognition, and this comes from the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators. This is a certificate that is presented to the Mayo Health Clinic System and the Project Search Steering Committee. And it is through the Burt Grover Child Advocacy Program that WASB is sponsors. It recognizes extraordinary dedication to the cause of child advocacy in the state of Wisconsin. So, our first certificate goes to Jen Steffes from the Mayo Business Liaison.[1016.13][1016.13](Applause). Our second certificate goes to Zan Deegan from the Mayo Business.[1033.33][1033.33](Applause). Tim Burns is our next honoree. He's the ECASD instructor for Project Search.[1045.73][1045.73](Applause). Our own Director of Special Education, Mandy Van Vliet.[1056.33][1056.33](Applause). Renee Stewart, who is the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation for the Mayo Health Clinic System and Project Search. Was she?
Yes.
Brian Vander West? Not, he's not here. We'll send him, we'll send that to him. Suzie Hoggly? Is that the white?
CDC.
Oh, did I pronounce that?
Mineu? Do we have to? For mineu?
No.
No. Well, we might have white outs. So see me afterwards.[1108.33][1108.33](Applause).
Donna Uleg?
Uleg.
Allison LaRoche?
She's not here.
Karen Pikeart, who's our family liaison.[1125.23][1125.23](Applause). Blith Rinaldi, who's the Business Advisory Committee Liaison.[1134.83][1134.83](Applause). And Michelle Olson, who is the DHS, Wisconsin Department of Health Services Representative. And I didn't see Michelle tonight, so. And then we have a certificate that will go to your Steering Committee as a whole, and I guess it could be displayed in some prominent place where the Project Search students gather.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Anywhere in the classroom, perfect.
So, on behalf of the School Board, on behalf of the staff, on behalf of the students who attend this program, we cannot thank you enough for your efforts on behalf of our students. You have given them a foot in the future that would not have been possible without your efforts, and you have given them opportunities that most of our students expect on an everyday basis, and for these students, it's a little bit more. So, thank you very much.[1198.51][1198.51](Applause).
And I just want to say, too, with this award, the Burt Grover Award, that is something that is shared at the state level, at the state education conference. So, again, thank you for putting our district on the map, and it is truly folks like you that do put us on the map, the businesses, the parents, the community partners that help us. And I personally absolutely adore going to Mayo and seeing the kids who I've gotten to know over the years, and they're thriving, and they're loving it. And I also know that the folks at Mayo absolutely love them, too. So, it's just a beautiful, beautiful thing. Next up, we have, we have one final recognition tonight, and that's for Lauren Prem. Lauren is our outgoing student representative representing Memorial High School. We just handed her her diploma on Friday night, and Lauren just did a fantastic job over the past year representing the student body at Memorial through advocating, helping us with our various policies. She helped us on various subcommittees for the district, and I could always count on her to be a very cheerful and a very helpful contributor in our meetings. So we have a small gift for you, Lauren, and we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts.[1277.44][1277.44](Applause).
And that concludes my report for tonight, and I'll now turn it over to you.
Thank you. I really don't have anything to share, but one item from my president's report. You'll see here that I have the rainbow flag sitting on my desk, and that's because this month is Pride Month. This month is celebrated beginning in about the 1970s to honor the 1969 Stonewall Riots. But Pride Month is all about envisioning a community, communities across this country where diversity is celebrated and all LGBTQ people are respected, valued, and affirmed no matter their sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. And that's so important because our LGBTQ students and staff here in Eau Claire contribute greatly to this vibrant, innovative, inclusive, world-class community that we call the Eau Claire Area School District. There's a great deal of ongoing work that needs to be done to ensure that all of our communities are fully inclusive for LGBTQ children and adults, and I would encourage you to visit our friends at cvlgbt.info to learn more from the Chippewa Valley LGBTQ nonprofit about ways to get involved. Not everyone knows this, but we were the first school district in the state to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity and expression for our employees. And we were one of the very early districts to add those protections for students as well. So I just want to say how proud I am that we have a School Board and administrative team that over the past few years has done a great deal of work to make sure that all students are valued, supported, loved, and have equitable access in our education system. We should really be proud of that. So, as President of the School Board, I wish you all a very meaningful Pride Month in our school district and across the community. And that's it for my president's report. We now move on to our School Board Committee Reports. Is there a report from the Budget Committee?
Yes.
Not at this time. Is there a report from LEAP? Okay, you have an upcoming meeting. Policy and Governance, we spent the lion's share of our time this morning discussing protocols and policy regarding concussion management in the school district. So, we've sent that draft. Now we'll be sending it to the Student Services Office, Athletic Departments, and other stakeholders to get their feedback over the next several months and hope to reconvene on that issue in the fall. And I believe that's all we have for committee reports, unless if there are others that folks would like to share. I know Demographic Trends has an upcoming meeting, and we don't have a Board representative, but hopefully we'll put somebody, well, someone will be able to sign up on the outreach Google Doc for that. Legislative update, I do not have one, other than to say that the last testimony day for the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding was today, and there were a lot of great comments shared, and would encourage everybody to check out the WASB.org website to hear about those, and hopefully we'll be hearing soon about what that commission plans to implement or propose in the state. And now we will move to our Consent Resolution Agenda. So we will consider approval of all of these items. We've been given background material on each of these or discussed them at a previous meeting. If you would like to pull an item, please do so, but otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2018, the minutes of closed session, May 21st, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report, the 2018-19 Property Liability and Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal, Employee Handbook Modifications, the Athletic Trainer RFP, revisions to Policy 185, Board Committees, Board Committee Assignments for 2018-19 as proposed by me, ratification of ECASD and ECAE Master Agreement, 2018-2019 Open Enrollment Applications. So I would entertain a motion to approve 6.2 through 6.11.
So moved.
Second? And we'll do a roll call vote for this one.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
And with the approval of the Human Resources Report, Dr. Hardbeck has something she'd like to share.
So with your approval of the Employment Report tonight, you also approved the appointment of Cale Bushman for the position of Principal at North High School, and he's in the audience. I'm going to ask him to stand. Mr. Bushman is currently the, was the Associate Principal at Wausau West High School, where he has served for the last eight years. He previously taught Special Education at Wausau East High School and Sparta High School. He earned his bachelor's degree through UW-Lacrosse and his master's through St. Mary's University, and he is currently working on his doctorate through Marion University. I will tell you that I have received several phone calls from Wausau West High School community asking me how in the world we could take them, take you away from them, and they're not happy with us. But we've heard wonderful things about you, and we're really looking forward to your leadership at North High School and to your joining ECASD with your family, and I, welcome.
Thank you. Very excited. Very excited.[1701.76][1701.76](Applause).
All right, and now we'll move to our individually considered resolutions, and for tonight's meeting, we have our OPEB timeline, and Ms. Johnson, if you'd like to go up to the podium.
I promise I'll keep it short. So following up from our last meeting on May 24th, here's a proposed schedule for some listening sessions that we would have over the summer months. Again, we talked last time that this would be a few of the meetings. It wouldn't be all of them, but there was desire to get some meetings out there sooner rather than later. So I would propose and look at doing one on June 18th here at the Admin Building, one July 11th, and then one July 16th, and that would give us some opportunity to provide you some feedback at the July 24th meeting, or 23rd, whatever day that is, to kind of get a feel for what we've been hearing and share with the Board at that point in time. We are still working on an individual letter to provide to the employees that are impacted. Our goal would be that we would provide that letter to the individual employees that come to the listening sessions over the summer, and then those, after those, we would individually mail them out so people have the information and are aware of that. OPEB@ecasd.us has been set up. We have been receiving some emails, and so far, just something- been set up. We have been receiving some emails. And so far, just some things that I've seen as a common theme I wanted to share with you is the concern over the grandfather dates, concerns that there aren't benefits at all. There's an impression that the benefits just go away after the grandfather dates. And then, a couple suggestions to change the scenarios, and can we look at some different options. A few questions that we've heard and received about the letter to the staff. The letter was emailed to all staff on May 25th. Some are questioning that a decision's already been made, and we're only looking at Scenario A. Again, on the same lines, why are we looking at one option when the school board hasn't voted on one option? Why is only the cheapest option being discussed? If the dates can be changed quickly, what is the guarantee that they won't be changed quickly again? I think that's in reference to saying that the plan won't go into effect July 1st of 2018. It would go into effect July 1st of 2019. But there's some concerns that, you know, there wasn't a formal decision, I don't believe, made, and so there's concern that it would go back again. And then, how does the start date impact the budget? Because, you know, we've been talking about how OPEB impacts the budget, and so that was a question we'd received as well. So, a timeline for the board, I've modified this a little bit since the last time you've seen it. And basically, what's changed is that the listening sessions, so down here on the bottom, that June 11th through the July 19th are those three proposed listening sessions that I showed you a moment ago. I put a question mark on July 23rd because, again, the board would need to decide that they want that to be an agenda item on that meeting. Then, we anticipated another report to the board in September of 2018, October, and then December. We had talked about a potential decision for any OPEB changes, and I know that we had kind of marked July 2019 as being a potential new start date. And so, that's kind of the timeline that we had talked about last time. I didn't really change it much. And so, here's the things that we need some board direction, and we can allow some time for discussion or a vote tonight. In previous meetings, there was a desire to have a staff meeting at every building, but then it sounded like maybe that wasn't what the board's desire was, so I would like some clarification on that. The last meeting, we had discussed about looking at a modified Scenario A, which was leaving the five-year grandfather but capping the insurance rates at the current insurance rates. Again, I wasn't real clear if we were moving in that direction or not, so I haven't requested that information yet. Places to post the listening schedule, the district update runs this week, and then staff are on leave for the summer, so how would you like us to communicate those? Is there specific information that you would like me to be sharing at the listening sessions? And then, my final question is, does the timeline meet the board's needs? So, my last side is really discussion and vote, but I'm going to flip back so you have an opportunity to kind of see information that I would ask for some direction on and how to proceed.
All right. So, let's just start with, let's just do bullet by bullet. So, the piece about staff meetings at every building. Commissioner Torres?
Thank you. My understanding was that having meetings at every building would be too hard to plan, and we suggested that we would cluster, so there wouldn't be that many, but enough for everyone to share their input with us. So, I think that's my recollection.
I think both options were discussed, and so I was just looking for clarity from the board as to which option is preferred.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
I think we had both of them out. So, I'm just going to, we have the three listening sessions over the summer, and we truly want to listen to our employees. Would it be possible to have those meetings with the individual schools take place once school starts in the fall?
Yeah, I anticipated we'd do both, do some the summer and then some again in the fall. So, the summer ones, I kind of laid out the dates, but then I'm trying to figure out what would you like me to do for the fall.
So, Ms. Johnson, with your timeline, you're talking about July 23rd, you'll kind of share preliminary update to us about the feedback that you received from the summer sessions. And then, moving forward, what maybe, maybe there's something we'd like to fine tune in the presentation or specifically ask that maybe we don't have yet in terms of information for September, October, which are also months that you would be in the buildings, I presume?
Yep.
Okay. So, what's, I mean, in terms of the capacity of your office, and it would mainly be you, I would think, doing these. So, what's your ability in September, October? I'm sure that several of the staff meetings are potentially overlap. So, is what Commissioner Torres is suggesting, having some clusters, what's workable for you?
I would definitely prefer to have some clusters and put them around the district because that way then it would be easier from a presentation point. And then, you know, cluster them. We could do some morning meetings. We could do some, you know, afternoon or maybe even a 5:00 meeting to accommodate for people's different schedules. And so, I would look to do a variety of things. I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be acceptable, you know, have three now, and then maybe look to five or six this fall and get the dates set and out there so that way then people know about them now, is what I was thinking.
Dr. Hardabek?
I was just going to remind the board, typically at the end of September, the beginning of October, we go out to schools to also talk about the budget and to do some communication about that. Sometimes, we'll do that at various sites or through various venues, whether it's through leadership team meetings or faculty meetings. But there is some communication with the schools about the final draft of the budget.
So, we're thinking cluster, cluster, get out there, and then as far as making sure that it's presented in some fashion in every staff meeting by the principal, can there be a communication in a principal's meeting at the start of the school year, just sharing kind of the general, we have the OPEB, at that point, I would assume we'd have some sort of a tab on the website. We'd have the OPEB email address. So, if that could be shared at every staff meeting, that would be, okay. So, we're thinking clustered and make sure that gets out to every principal, have a variety of times, AM, afternoon, PM, throughout the months of September and October. Is that fine with, okay. So, that's, is that, oh, Commissioner Torres?
Perhaps making sure that every employee has received the individual letter.
Is it going to be sent in the mail or as email?
Well, I figured we would hand deliver the ones that come to the listening sessions over the summer. And then, I guess it would probably be snail mail if we sent it out over the summer, just because I don't know how many people are checking their district email. But we could certainly hold them until the fall, and if we're going to do it in conjunction with a budget meeting, we could hand it out then. We could figure out, that's logistics. We could figure it out. Is there a preference on behalf of the board, if it's email or if it's snail mail?
I think that, I think kind of both.
Okay.
If it wouldn't be too much work. I mean, I know that, because individually sending these letters, because they're all going to be personalized.
Right.
So, but, I mean, if it would work to have it through email as well, I think that would be good, but...
I'm not sure. I might have to have my tech people help me with that one a little bit.
You have one staff in your office, so the public knows this. So, I just want to, yeah.
When would the letters be sent?
Well, I would, we're hoping to have them ready for the first listening session, which is scheduled, I think, tentatively for next Monday. And so, the plan would be to have them ready to go and hand them out.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for the work put into that. I think, too, people don't necessarily check their email in the summer. I mean, I check it all the time, so I don't know why people don't. But I know that that's the case, and I don't blame them when they're not in working. But I think it'd be good to do both as well.
Yeah, I think snail mail, the sooner the better. And I think, yeah, as soon as we can get it out there prior to at least some of these sessions, so folks can get out there and speak with us. Are we ready to move on then to the second bullet? Okay. And this is following up on, I believe, the last session where we talked about, is there the, an Option A that would include the locked-in rates, right? Okay. Do you want to walk us through that, Ms. Johnson?
Sure. So, the difference between Scenario A and Scenario B was the grandfather period. So, A had a five-year grandfather, and B had a three-year grandfather. And I think when budget development was initially looking at all three scenarios, because you have C out there, you know, we had the extreme. We had the $42 million savings, and we had the $57 million savings. And so, budget development said, can you find something in the middle? Can you find something about a $50 million savings? And so, we came up with Scenario B, which was a three-year grandfather with the rates locked in with the current rates of 18-19 health and dental, because it is tied to the health and dental. And so, it seemed like maybe there was a desire that we would do a five-year grandfather. And my concern that I shared with you was then, we're also exposing ourselves to five years of health and dental fluctuations, and we don't know what that's going to look like. And so, if it was a minimum of a 5% increase per year, we would be subjecting ourselves to potentially an additional 25% increase in costs. And so, I had shared that concern, and I can certainly talk to the actuary to get it. I wasn't sure if there was consensus that that's the direction you would like me to move. So, I'm looking for confirmation.
I certainly, I thought after that last meeting that we did want that to go, just to ask our consultant, to ask for what that would look like, the option, basically Option B in terms of the rates, but with the five-year grandfather of A. My impression that we did want to look at that. So, if we could have that for the July 23rd, that would be, and I, I mean, I think that for the, I think that we also said that for the purposes of getting feedback, that would be a relatively broad option to get feedback on from the staff, just as a workable option for the purposes of the listening sessions. But if I'm misinterpreting what we had said at the last meeting, please jump in. But I'm seeing head nods, so I'm thinking we're...
Can I ask just a clarifying? So, I can get that from the consultant. Would you like us to vet it through budget development before bringing it back to the full board on July 23rd?
Well, I would think that, I trust budget development, that if you bring it to them to talk through it, would budget development be able to meet and discuss it prior to listening sessions? Or would there not be time?
Not, we could play with the dates of the listening sessions, but no. It'll take the actuaries a couple of weeks to get us that information.
Okay.
So...
Commissioner Harder?
I'm also concerned, were we talking about getting the revised for June, for the July 23rd meeting, correct?
Correct.
And are listening sessions end on July 16th, so...
Well, and I guess I thought that we had asked to go to the consultant person to get the hybrid at the last meeting.
That was my recollection.
But, so, I'm thinking that if I, I don't know if maybe that could be sent to the board as soon as we have that information sent in the Friday letter, and if people have questions to contact you, but, I mean, contact you or Dr. Hardabek. But, I mean, I really felt that that was the option that we wanted to move forward with, for the purposes of listening sessions. So, I'm hoping that you'd be able to have them and have that in time.
I may need to adjust the dates.
Okay.
The actuary, I think they need about two weeks to give me something modified. And so, we can move the listening session dates around. The July ones will be fine. It's the one next week that I would be concerned about.
So, maybe have one in August?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that fine with folks? Okay. Places to post listening schedule. Commissioner Harder?
I'm sorry, could I, just on the question of having a single option present, there was a question, it's not on this slide, but it was questions received slide, about why are we only looking at one option? And I think we sort of implicitly did that with the letter that we agreed to send out, is that that letter spoke to a single option. We did that partly to simplify the presentation at these listening sessions. Having, one option is probably confusing enough. Having three, it would make it almost unsupportable, perhaps. So, I wanted to address that fact, but also, do we, we didn't explicitly vote on that. We kind of implicitly voted on it. Do we want to, do we need to, what would we like to say anything more explicit about that option?
I don't know. And perhaps Secretary Iverson, you could go back and see what our motion, if we had motions at the last meeting regarding this and what they were?
We did not.
We did not.
We had a motion that was made that was withdrawn.
Withdrawn. And that was the motion?
And the only motion that was made was to bring back a timeline for the listening sessions.
Okay. So, you're asking, should we make a motion to approve a scenario for the purposes of listening sessions? Is that your question?
I think that's right. And maybe if we want to clarify what that means in terms of, have we decided on that option? I think there could be easily, people could infer that, and maybe if that's not what we're doing, we should be clear that we're not.
Yeah, and I think the message should be, we want ease of communication about this issue. We don't want it to be something where you're, where it's like a jeopardy, where there's like, you know, 20 different things, which one. So, having something that's, you know, easy to swallow, chew on, see if there's adjustments to it that people would propose. So, yeah, I mean, oh, Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
I think that was the conversation we had, was to have the one option so that we could have, one to base a discussion off of and truly listening to what ideas people bring forth. I don't think it was meant as us saying that was the option. So, and I think people were kind of concerned about that, and that, I don't think that was the discussion I had as a board at the time.
So, I mean, do we need to, is it clear enough for you from the board in terms of consensus that we'd like this option for the purposes of listening sessions, or would it be helpful for you if we voted? Commissioner Becca?
There's, of course, a lot of expertise among staff members, so we consider giving more information, and people will, I think more is better, and then people will understand it in the ways that they do.
In terms of present more options?
Mm-hmm.
What would, so what do you propose?
I think give them the options that are available, and people can use them in ways that make sense, and then we can clarify in the listening sessions.
Would that be, so, in terms of you sending out letters to the staff, my understanding was it would be a hypothetical, basically, based on one option. So, if we have more than one option that we're going to go with, then you're going to have to do double or three times the work, right?
So, I think that this one is very challenging because there's three options. There's similarities, but there's differences.
Right.
And so, we've been working on doing the letters proposing all three options because we didn't know if we would have a decision from the board as we're leaning towards this direction. And I agree that it's more complicated to have that, but because we're doing individual letters, each person can see under Scenario A, this is what, how it impacts me. Under Scenario B, here's how it impacts me. Scenario C. So, it may raise more questions, but it may also help them understand better, here's what the differences are. I think because we have means to communicate with people, and we have that email address set up already, we can tailor the listening sessions and talk about the differences, just like I did with the full board when we presented it in April. And then, that gives them an opportunity to see, here's how it impacts me, as well as then the opportunity for questions, feedback. And then, they can still provide feedback because we have the email address. So, it's challenging, but I also think that in order to, because an option hasn't been narrowed down and said, here's what we're going to do, I think that it's better to give more information than less. It's going to be a challenge no matter what we do because it's very complicated and it's very personal for everybody. And so, I think we all need to recognize that. But I think that if we do a good job of explaining and tailoring that letter, we have to try that, I think, because a decision hasn't been made on, this is the route that we're going. And if the purpose is to solicit feedback, I think you have to present all three options to get some fair and honest feedback as well on it.
Okay. Well, and I wasn't aware that you'd already done those calculations for all three.
Almost. I have lots of help from the assessment department. We're almost there. We're waiting on some information from tonight, and then we'll just about have it ready. So, I have helpers, which is very much appreciated.
Okay. Commissioner Harder?
I think it's fine to present more options. My only possibly minor concern is that we did send out a letter that said that the proposed replacement will have a grandfather buffer for staff who meet retirement eligibility within the next five years. So, it does kind of implicitly narrow it down. I think if we can, if we can be comfortably allow for that, and everybody's comfortable with the fact that that went out, then we can, I think it's otherwise a good idea to go. to go with, with more rather than less.
And I think that's where some of the questions are coming from, because in the letter, you know, it's, it said that we're looking for that five-year grandfather and I think that generated some of the questions that we received, you know, has a decision been made already? And so I think that's for the board to address on how they want to proceed with that. I'll do whatever you'd like.
Well, I guess, so we're, as we talk about the options that we'd like to include in the communications, whether it's the letters, the listening session, you're saying we'd, more is your recommendation to provide a more holistic view, I guess, of what this could look like in varying ways. And then the question is, does this, does our earlier letter saying that any option we propose, we really would like to have a five-year buffer and that the board did approve that letter? So like you said, kind of an implicit endorsement of that, of, of not necessarily one specific option, but the, but the specific concept of a five-year grandfather. So do we want to, at the very least, have in the letter as far as options, what it would look like for all of them, but with a five-year? Or do we want to include ones that are less than five years and just say that these are, these are just various options, not necessarily endorsed by the board?
So the options that you have with option B and option C, the actuarial has done the calculations on that. It does not provide for a five-year grandfather. So the information that would be included for each of the employees would be based, you know, on the premise that there is no five-year. I think that the board has indicated to the staff that they're looking for a five-year grandfather. I don't know if your letter is binding to that effect or not, you know? I, I, I don't know. That would be something the board would have to determine. But I do think there are questions and, from staff about the other options and I think we've had some questions from the community about, you know, why are we looking only at one option with staff? So I don't know if that helps or not, but kind of a summary.
I think that if it's clarified in the letter that the board has not approved any of these options, that they are, these are options that we've, that have been developed in consultation with the actuary, with, and with, with conversation with the budget development committee, but having a clear understanding in that letter that these are, none of these are approved or endorsed by the board. They're to give you a, a picture of what the various, how the various options would impact you. I think if it's framed in that way, then I think that's acceptable. I, I guess, how do other folks feel? You think that's okay? Commissioner Harder?
I, I think, I think that, you know, there's a little bit of a mismatch here, obviously, and some of the things we're saying about it. I think if we can address it at least and say that, you know, we're, we're expanding the range of options that we're showing for, to, to show the full range of what the board is considering.
Right.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, and I think we need to separate information for the purposes of staff feedback versus how the board feels and what the board's ultimately going to do, because I think those are separate things. And I think if this discussion was just about what option do we support, that would be a different conversation. But we're just talking right now about, we want to get information out to staff, we want them to see a full picture, how this would impact them, their portfolio, X, Y, Z. So I, I think having that separation, I think it makes it clear that we should include more options, I guess, just for the purposes of their research and, and then all, and then ultimately providing feedback to, that will come to us. We'll see how they feel about the different options, we'll see what their suggestions are and it'll be truly democratic. So I guess, are, is there any other feedback about that? Is this helpful enough for you? Or would you like more guidance in this, in this bullet?
No, I think I'm okay with that one.
Okay. So that, and that was this, is there specific information kind of in talking about the scenario A? So now we, we really need to, what, what we really need to do tonight is, is approve a timeline. So obviously, we're hoping to include that hybrid option in what you send, correct?
Um, I think I would want to vet it through budget development and the board first.
Okay. And so potentially that could, that could be shared in the September, October meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And ultimately, when there's a website, would be included in that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the only change I see that we have to make to this timeline is obviously the listening session date, because we're going to, are we going to move one from, or are we not going to have to move the listening sessions now?
Um...
We'll have to move one?
We may have to move, we may have to move that first one. So...
Okay.
We, why don't we just, if you have a target of how many you'd like me to have by that July twenty-third meeting, we can look at schedules and make sure that we've got the individual letters ready to go and I'll make it work.
So... Oh, Commissioner Harder?
Were we talking about moving them to accommodate the, the new hybrid scenario?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we were. But if we keep that off the table and just go with what we've got, I would have to confirm, but I think I, I think we're very close to being able to do the letters and have them ready by Monday.
And that could stick then to the June eighteenth, July eleventh, July sixteenth plan?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as long as you think we'll have the information by then for, in terms of the letter and stuff.
I know that I'm, I know that we're very close.
Okay.
I'll confirm in the morning, just if you can make it so there's some flexibility, if we need to move that first one on June eleventh, that would be all that I would ask because I need to confirm with the people assisting me with that calculation if we'll have it. And we're very close, but we haven't, we are waiting for some additional information from the board, so I just need to confirm we can get that this week.
Well, let's just, I mean, for the purposes of flexibility...
Yep.
Let's just have the June eleventh through July nineteenth piece, just say June, July listening sessions.
Perfect.
Three listening sessions. If that, to be completed by July nineteenth?
That would be great.
July nineteenth? Okay. Is that fine with folks? So with that brief change, is there, is there a motion to approve the timeline with that change of making the June through July listening sessions just a little bit broader, so in case we need to change the date? So move? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. So we have our timeline and since we don't meet until July twenty-third, I'm, we could have some updates through mail between now and then, I would think, just about how that, how this is coming along and if there are updates. Okay. Is there anything else for our purposes that you need right now from the board? Okay.
I think I'm good.
The only other question that I, I know has been asked that I just want to talk through with the board is regarding the OPEB at ECASD.us. I don't, obviously I don't have access to that, so I don't know if we've received communication on that. The question was, who's going to monitor that? How is it going to be monitored? My assumption based on the last, when we first kind of discussed that email address was that the, the, the themes and feedback received in that email address would be reviewed by the budget committee. That was my, so by the board members on the budget committee. And that was kind of my assumption, I guess, but I think we did talk, just, but I just want to make sure that that's on base, that is kind of what we're talking about. So, okay.
Yeah, I would envision it very similar to when we had the compensation at ECASD.us.
Great.
We summarized and we basically gave a summary of data to budget development as well as the board that here's what's the type of concerns that came in, how many were related, just to give an idea. We are monitoring that email address right now and so it's been in the district update the last two weeks. We haven't gotten a lot of messages yet. The ones that I've gotten, they've kind of shared, you know, the similarities of what we've seen. I anticipate through the listening sessions though, and as word gets out that it'll get more popular, so.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll definitely summarize those at budget development and then we should be able to provide some detail to the board when we come back in July.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is, are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. So we will now adjourn to committee and we have a few different committee reports and items for discussion tonight. The first up is our Spanish dual immersion program. I'm not sure who's speaking to that at the podium.
Dave Oldenburg and Brianna Smith are going to be doing a follow-up from their last presentation and giving you an update on the listening sessions that were, that you authorized and then looking for some guidance on next steps.
All right. Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to update on the progress of the dual immersion program option and the listening sessions that we, we, Brianna and I launched into the community the last couple of months. So we did, as we reported the last session, we had four different listening sessions. We'll present some of the data on that tonight and then ask the board for some consideration on next steps. Thank you. So we just want to remind folks attending tonight and those people maybe watching at home that the dual immersion program aligns to the board's strategic plan, the ECASD strategic plan outlining academic achievement, social emotional growth opportunities for students, certainly creating collaborative cultures, developing high-quality staff and partnership with families and our community. You can be in charge of that, thank you. So members of our dual immersion committee, as we've shown this before, you can see we've got a cross-cutting membership from across ECASD, our UW-OKLAR partners, community members and representative groups within the city, including our L Central Board. So that, that group has helped to build our listening sessions, the questions to ask, process the data and then draft different options, including this PowerPoint for tonight's, tonight's meeting. So we have Brianna talk a little bit about, and remind the board a little bit about the research behind the dual immersion committee, what some exemplar programs or models are out there to observe and perhaps craft something from, and then most importantly, the academic success that students experience as they move through this program. Brianna?
Thank you. Good evening. So really what I want to do in the next few slides is just kind of reiterate that there's an overwhelming amount of research behind the academic success of students who participate in a dual language program. So I'm going to do a quick summary here of some of that research and how it correlates to academic success. So I've talked about this study before, this is the most recent one out of Portland Public Schools. And the key to this was the findings that by the time students were in eighth grade, it did not matter what their target language was going into a dual immersion program, they were reading at almost a year ahead of their peers who were in a non-immersion program. And this is really current research that provides evidence to correlate academic success in students in a dual immersion program. We'll see, maybe. Another piece of research that is, I think crucial, is that it is enhancing students' academic skills. There are studies that consistently show that students in an immersion program do as well or better than their peers in non-immersion programs when we talk about English, language, arts, math, science, and then there's new research out there about a correlation between higher skills and achievement when we talk about music and some of the arts. And lastly, and I think this is real important when we think of how this could benefit our community, is we are a public school and we are here to, district to serve the community and a dual language immersion program really gives us an opportunity to support historically underserved students, but also it's an additive approach for all students. So we are going to offer every student an equal playing field to seal, excel and accrue the significant benefits of bilingualism and biliteracy. So really we're creating a program that a group of students in our district that historically is underserved, when you look at our data, this would equal that playing field for them, but it's also adding another program choice for all other students in the school district. Just a reminder, before we, when we came to you to ask to do the listening sessions, we really wanted to do those to get a sense of belonging for the families that would come to the listening sessions. We wanted to introduce components of a dual language program to the community and we also kind of wanted to gauge the support if we decided to move forward as a school district with a dual language immersion program. And as Dave said, we had held four sessions, we had forty-two in attendance at the four sessions and we had an exit survey and we had thirty-six people complete the survey. It was a short survey with two questions. The first question was asking if they would support the district moving forward on a one to four scale. We had six people agree and then thirty of the people strongly agree with the district having a dual immersion program. Next, we also wanted to gauge those in attendance, if they had children that could possibly participate in a future dual immersion program. So I specifically asked for under the age of four because based on our implementation timeline, children who would benefit from this would be children who are four and under right now. And so those in attendance, we had twenty-one who had children under the age of four and then fifteen who just came to show community support, who do not have children under the age of four. And then I also want to gauge the language backgrounds of those in attendance, because if you remember, in order for a dual immersion program to run with fidelity, you want that even split in the classroom of fifty-fifty, fifty percent of your native Spanish speakers and then fifty percent English speakers, so everyone has a strong language model. And we had off of those, twenty-one who attended had children under the age of four, eleven said their children identified as Spanish speakers and ten said their children identified as Spanish speakers. So we did see a nice mix of representation at the listening sessions, which was nice. And then lastly, we asked if they consider enrolling their child in a Spanish dual immersion program and all twenty-one of them said yes, they would. We also throughout the listening sessions gave opportunity for questions and then feedback. And after four, we saw some common themes that came up. One, there was a lot of questions about lottery protocol that came up on how the district would do that. And I think it's important to know that first, when we talk about the lottery, we would create an application process and then until we do that, we won't know if we will need a lottery. So if we get enough applicants that shows we need to pursue a lottery, that's when the committee would look at different options in creating a lottery system. But first, we do need to have an application process in place. Questions about the location, if you remember, we proposed Locust Lane in Longfellow. And we, again, just reiterated with people in attendance that those two sites were chosen based off of space availability, if they could hold a K through five program. There was questions about year of implementation. There were people in attendance that were hoping they, we could have a program up and running this September. And so just asking, you know, questions about that of how soon we could get it up and running and then also if we could implement it with different grade levels came up as well. The next bullet is a question that came up at most of the listening sessions that actually Dave and I, and didn't come up at the committee, so we're really glad we did the listening sessions, is questions of how we would determine Spanish proficiency of incoming students. And that was something we didn't really think about until this listening sessions, which is really important because like we said, we want strong language models. So parents self-identify on our home language survey, so moving forward as a district, we would have to, you know, weed out, how are we going to know if, if a student truly is proficient in Spanish? That would be something the committee would look into of what other districts do. I've done a little bit of digging, there's some that do some screeners, also on parent interviews and some do both, but that would be something we'd have to look into moving forward as well. And then also questions about how we would assess student progress for students who are in the program, which I'm going to touch on in the next slide here. So when we talk about measuring student achievement, I think it's important to know that with a dual immersion program, we are mirroring our, our universal program. So what the students are, they're meeting the same standards, they will be using the same benchmark testing and participating in the state assessments as well. So here's some examples up there that, you know, students in this program would still participate, they'd be administered the PALS, DRA. participate, they'd be administered the PALS, DRA, we have STAR, we could use the DECA for social-emotional and kindergarten as well, and then the state test at the elementary level would be the forward exam. Students in this program would still participate in all those assessments, so we could have some data to look at our program comparable to the universal program. In addition, students will participate in assessments in their target language as well, because you do want to show growth if we're going to have students that are going to be biliterate and bilingual, we'll want to have data to show that their literacy skills are growing in their first language as well. So, PALS, which is an early screener that we use when we talk about like fundamental literacy skills, is also available in Spanish, and then STAR as well, which we use with our upper grades, is also available in Spanish as well. So, we would have an addition of some assessments for these students, but all of them would also participate in the same assessments as students in the universal program. This is just a reminder of the implementation timeline that we have proposed of this year, kind of the year of planning and digging in and getting some feedback from the community. Next year, the focus would be on professional development and curriculum development. So, in the year of 2019, we could have our first group of kindergarteners ready to go with a dual immersion program. So, next year, when I talk about, you know, curriculum and professional development, when we talk about curriculum, there's a lot of work, because there are going to be certain content areas are going to be delivered in a different language. So, there will be curriculum writing that has to occur in Spanish, so we have the learning targets in that language. We also will have to align our resources for those areas. Some of them are easy, like I said, math expressions are out there in Spanish, and some, we might have to do some research about what would be the best fit to match our English resource for the, if it's still being delivered in Spanish. And there'd also be some teacher and BEA, so bilingual educational assistance, professional development that's needed as well. Talking about the three pillars of, you hear that a lot when you look into like professional development for these types of programs. The first pillar is really focused around like biliteracy and bilingualism, the second pillar is focused on academic achievement, and then, the third pillar really focuses on like your program fidelity. And then, a huge piece of the professional development for the staff working with our kids on a day-to-day basis, will be making sure they're equipped with appropriate instructional strategies. And then, finally, we are going to need some administrator professional development as well. How will they be able to maintain fidelity to the program model that we choose? And then, they are also going to be charged with evaluating and supervising dual-language teachers, so some professional development around that as well.
Thank you, Brianna. All right, so, we want to look at the estimated budget impacts and understand these are estimates for the board to consider. You can see that there is a cost for materials per classroom, as there would be in the universal program. An advantage here in the dual immersion program is that some of those expenditures could be offset by Title II and bilingual-bicultural grants. You can see that there is a, an initial cost of programming of roughly $9,300 to start dual immersion initial training for your initial teachers, who then can be lead teachers within the program and help deliver some of that professional development, that we would estimate would incur an ongoing cost of $5,000 per year for each additional course you may add, and then, transportation, of course, being a cost as well. Transportation models, again, talking with student transit earlier today, again, modeling some of the scenarios, the best estimate at this point would be initially up to $45,000 of an expense, but understanding that that expense curve would bend as more students would enroll into the Spanish immersion, the dual immersion program, and that is, you've got a volume of students, you would have duplication of routes that have been established. So, there's thought that that cost curve could bend, but it really ends up based on where the students live around ECASD and some of the travel agreements that we enter into with families. So, what we're asking tonight is for the board to give us direction to continue to build the scope and the process of launching a dual immersion program. So, to move forward, the committee is simply requesting the board to approve professional development expenditures and begin some of the curriculum work, we'd like you to consider that, and maybe act on it in the July meeting, and then you can see if the board chooses to direct us to go forward after the July meeting, then some, two other proposed timelines that we'd like to meet, then approve possibly an application process, and then consider more details around transportation, once we're informed about student locations throughout ECASD. So, we're asking the board really tonight now to consider taking action in the July board meeting to approve costs for professional development and the curriculum work that needs to occur, it's the next logical step. So, questions?
Well, the first, I guess the first question, just logistically, the, because the board has only approved the listening sessions.
Correct.
But by approving each of these three in phases, then, once the third one is approved, that will be a de facto full approval from the board, because by looking at this, it doesn't look like we're going to have like a, just a blanket vote for approval. It'll be in three, these three phases, correct?
Right, and, yes, President Lou Milli, I wonder if that is the most judicious way to approach this, so it gives the board an opportunity to give incremental approval. We can develop, we can do the professional development that's needed, some of the curriculum work that needs to occur, then you have a chance to react to the progress of that work, and then whatever other realities there are, and if the board chooses for us to go forward to accept applications in December, we could do so, with the understanding that applications isn't necessarily a commitment to launch the program, right? But it does then let us gauge interest, aptitude, location of students, that would inform the transportation piece. Then, as we, now, speculating a bit, but as we get to March then, then we would talk about, okay, here's the cost of transportation, here's the students that are interested, here's, you know, how we think it might impact the building that we're going to move into, how we're going to staff it, finding the available talent. So, it lets us scale up, I think, in a more judicious manner and best use of the district's resources.
No, and that, I think it makes sense to phase it. I just wanted to make sure for everyone to just be, that we were all clear on that, it would be in phases.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to add additional clarity, Joe.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Becca?
So, for me, I always want to know about the student first, you know, and who are the, who are the students, you know, this program will serve. So, you talked about, there were many questions about the lottery protocol and application process must be developed. For me, that's primary. So, if you think about, I'd like to see what are the details of the application process, because I think it's going to drive your curriculum in many ways. So, when I attended one of the listening sessions, and something that was discussed was the option of, with the attrition that's going to happen naturally, allowing students to enter at advanced grades, because they're already bilingual or multilingual, so that would drive your curriculum. Or, we talked about at that listening session, a belief that one's treating everyone equally doesn't automatically translate into equity. And so, thinking about that, is this actually an equitable program, and that'll be driven by your application process? So, for me, either the application comes first, or at least it comes parallel with the professional development, because they inform one another.
So, what I'm understanding, Dr. Becca, is you would like us to at least work on a draft application process, or a draft application to present in July as well? Okay. Thank you.
Is, is that, as far as the application process and developing that, is that something that is a part of the PD to get the information on how to do it? Is it like chicken and egg situation? I'm just wondering, because if it, okay.
A little bit on that, so some of the professional development, we go to part of creating your program scope and handbook and things like that would lay out how, what would be best fit for our district and community and application process, and if we went to a lottery. A lot of districts, when you look at like Madison and like Appleton, their application, their enrollment form is identical to what would be our district enrollment form, but students, they would get the option of choosing to also have their child apply for this dual immersion program, and a lot of districts then follow that up with listening sessions for those families to learn more about that. So, we could dig into that, I think it would involve Dave and I and the committee working with other districts who have successful application processes already in place, so we're not starting from scratch.
Okay. So, you, so it is workable to do it for, have a draft of it in July, at least for something for us to talk through, and if we have further direction or edits we'd like to suggest?
We could have some draft models for, to react to.
Yeah.
Understanding, very drafty, right?
Right, right.
Not committed to, to the draft, but something to react to for sure.
Okay. Commissioner, how about, well?
I had a question about some of the funding with the grants, the Title III and the bilingual-bicultural grant, is that money always there?
Yeah, so, Title III is grant money for English language learners. So, students in dual immersion programs can also qualify for English language services, because we would screen every student who speaks another language, and if they qualify, that is funding on a per pupil basis, so that funding is there. What we don't know is the amount per pupil, shifts, not a lot, but a little. And then, the bilingual-bicultural grant is a grant where we get a percent back. The key to the bilingual-bicultural grant is, before we can apply for that, you have to have a certified bilingual teacher in place, and you have to meet what they call trigger numbers. So, we'd have to have 10 native Spanish-speaking students in that program and a licensed bilingual teacher, and then we can apply for that grant, and we can actually, within that grant, we can put all of the salary infringe for the teacher and the bilingual educational assistant in that classroom, then we get a percent back on the salary infringe.
Can I have a follow-up question? So, is that money always there?
Historically, yes, it has always been there, but I would not say, I would never say it will be there in the future, as we know how education goes, but historically, we have always received that, that funding.
But, you know, in these times, the funding cliff piece that we need to be cognizant of, you know, down the road, that might not be there, and considering our budget, I just...
That's a good point.
Yeah, thank you.
We have seen some movement of federal dollars in Title I and Title II, very true. Title III is smaller amount of money, quite a bit smaller.
But the, but the...
National application, we haven't seen as much direct to there yet.
But the bilingual-bicultural, we have to have the program up and running in order to get that money.
That's a grant that I apply for in the summer, so it would be, we could apply for that the summer before it is up and running, so that first year, we could get the percent, as long as the person is hired before I usually apply for that grant, it's in July.
And is, is that amount of money always there as well? I mean, do you know what that amount will be?
Typically, I think, Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about 8% that we have gotten back on the salaries and fringes.
Thank you.
So, some quick math, if we do a hire, the 8% or 9% that is returned would help, would help augment really the PD or the supplies, right, the materials, so that's how we'd like to bundle it together.
So, 80, 90,000, 10%, you'd get about 8, 9,000.
You can take care of a large majority of the supplies and materials.
Thanks.
At that level.
Okay. Commissioner Torres?
Do you have a sense of who would be part of the professional development?
Well, Brianna?
Yeah, I think when you look at professional development that is successful, you would want an administrator, preferably the administrator that is the location that is part, taking place in, Dave, myself, and then, a couple, we have teachers in the district who have the bilingual licensure, we would, it'd be crucial that they attend, because we've learned that when you attend professional development, if you can build capacity within, so if we have teachers that attend that and we build their capacity, then they could help us, you know, provide professional development for the new hires. So, we would want to have a team that participates in the professional development, just not myself or Dave. You really would want people that have that licensure attended as well.
And we, we mentioned in the previous budget slide about there was a one-time initial cost, it was more expensive, with the idea that the experts that we train then come back, and as Brianna just said, replicate that train-the-trainer model.
Yeah. And how about the principals of the sites?
Attending the professional development, or just in general? So, both of the, both of the principals have, are part of our committee, so they have been to a lot of the committee meetings, so they have been aware of the process and what, you know, of where we're at with the process, and both know that moving forward, if this does move forward, that they would be a part of the professional development as well. And actually, both of them would really appreciate it, because they're going to be the ones evaluating and supervising.
Certainly a commitment from the principal, I'd age belting her out.
May I ask a clarifying question? So, the professional development is what we're going to be bringing to consent in July, which is going to inform the process to develop the, the application process? So, I'm confused with the direction, because if they do, if we do that work before the July meeting, then we've leaped, we've jumped in front of the approval to do that work?
My understanding was kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Becca, but like I wrote here to add to this slide, kind of a 1A, which would be review application process samples from other districts. And then, we can share feedback to that end, and that could help you inform your process for what you bring us in December. Was that pretty much what you, okay?
I just don't want to jump in front of the approval process.
Does that, is that, does that make sense?
As long as that's okay with the board, I just want to make sure that we just don't get in front of it, you know, get, move before we're allowed.
It'd be in concert, if that's okay.
Thanks for that clarification, Joe, that's a good point.
Is that, do you have any, oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You want to be on the school board too?
I'm wondering if with the, the questions that you're asking, it's maybe about, not so much the application process, but the criteria for admission.
Yes.
And so, I think that in working with the districts that Brianna and Dave have been working with, they might be able to give you a description of that criteria, and maybe not the application itself. Is that what you're thinking about?
Especially how, how are districts recruiting a diverse population, and how do you know when, like, how, what's your measure of success? And so, I think you would know this, because we spoke about it at, at the listening session, that I personally have philosophical opposition to lottery, and I don't think it has to be a lottery. So, how do you, how do you recruit for truly diverse population of students?
And so, I would say, I think we can get some guidance from the districts who are already involved in particularly, please let me ask.
We'll work, we'll get a variety of samples for you to react to.
Okay. Commissioner Harder?
Thanks. So, it looks like we're, would be asked in the next meeting to approve PD and curriculum development work, kind of through the summer, and sort of up to the next time we look again, would be in December. So, sort of between now and December, what would help me make a decision on that would be, if you can quantify quite specifically the costs of PD and other development work that would be happening between now and December, and actually, it would be helpful to know the money spent to date on development, I would find that very helpful to put it into a full context, because of, you know, we're, because of the budgetary situation we're in right now. Would that, is that possible? I don't know if you have enough information to do that.
To date, we haven't spent any money. We're working pro bono, no. We, so, to date, we haven't, you know, we've done a lot of, you know, research in, you know, during, during our workday to get all this information out there, same with, you know, the listening sessions. One thing I know, moving forward, there is a module that I would like a group to go through, the principals, I've invited a group, so teachers with the licensure, the EL teachers in that building, the administrators, it's a module focused around professional development, around the three pillars, and that program actually is, it's $200 a person, so it's not a huge expenditure, and we could look at using Title II funds to cover that. And then, looking into next school year, moving forward, when we talk about curriculum, a lot of that would look at like stipend rates, because we'd be asking... a lot of that would look at like stipend rates because we'd be asking staff members with the licensure to, for their time to help us write curriculum, which typically that happens outside of the school day.
So, do you think it would be possible to quantify for that, for that next meeting then?
Yeah.
What kind of figure we're talking about?
We can be more precise with that.
Yeah. And then in terms of time spent, paid, paid time developing it too?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. And then I think along the same line is just the, I'm looking at the second to last slide and I think it's been pretty consistent. I think we looked at the same slide before. And just getting, what I don't see here is staffing costs listed. And I'm wondering about that. I know that's a, can be an issue with these things. And I think you, I think you addressed it, Dave, in a previous discussion. We didn't get too deep into the topic, but...
Sure. Quick review of the FTE to offer the program. FTE follows the student. So, it's really based on where we withdraw the students from, be it lottery or application or if there's a different model that, that we can advance to the board to take a look at. But as students move throughout the district, we use all the different tools and levers that we can to minimize the staffing increase and have a maximum amount of FTE follow the student. So, you could, based on where the students are drawn from, incur more FTE expense or very little FTE expense just based on what the current reality of that building is that you remove a student from. You could have a building that because a large amount of students are interested and have aptitude for the program, you go from three sections to two sections. So, there, very easy movement of FTE. Could be the other way. You could have a different model. We have the students spread to all thirteen of the, of the current buildings. And then just a student or two moves and you've got a different reality. So, until you get a little bit farther down the road, it'd be real hard to quantify that. I know the cost is going to be between zero and one FTE of a staff person. That could be right now, probably somewhere in the middle, but the process is...
One FTE per loca, per classroom, per location.
Right.
Well, an FTE, just to clarify, an FTE has to go into the classroom. But the net change of FTE and, as Dave was mentioning, depending on where students are coming from, and Kay has worked this with each one of her classrooms. To give you an example, these are kindergarten classroom, max size is twenty-five. So, if a building has seventy-seven students, there are a few students over three sections of twenty-five. And so, if those students move, are part of the lottery and move, you could actually see the FTE in one of the other buildings actually be reduced because of this program. And so, really, it really depends on where the students are coming from.
You just described a kind of a best case scenario. And I'm interested in also that, quantifying it as best we can and the number is zero.
But you won't know that until you actually have students that application process.
But you can model it.
Well, it depends where students are coming from. And it depends how, what the model for, as Dr. Beekah mentioned, the model of how you're bringing students to the program. If it's purely land and lottery.
So, we can't project the staffing costs is what I'm hearing?
The staffing would depend upon the students that, where the students are coming from.
Yeah, and I was just saying, it's hard, you can't really project it.
It would depend, because it depends on a few things in terms of the number of students that are going to be enrolled in that building that year. You also have open enrollment, alternate school requests, there's a lot of moving parts for that. But you would try to, as Dave mentioned, use all those pieces to try to make sure that your staffing stayed level.
I guess the point is, I know that we're having, you know, I'm just, I am, what I've dealt a little bit with the Arctic zone situation over the last week with staffing. And what I've learned is I don't understand staffing. It's complicated, fractional people and things. I don't, totally.
So, these are good questions.
But, but what I do know is that we're having difficulty staffing that single program to fidelity and are unable to this year. And so, I wonder in our budget situation, how we anticipate being able to staff this one to fidelity. And so, projecting ahead to those and understanding the different models that may unfold would be very helpful to me.
But the elementary buildings use the class size, the, the class size guidelines. You know, the, at the K three and then at the four or five level. And so, the same model still applies in this situation. And Kay is, is, I mean, I'm not sure if you get any yet.
So, it's a simpler model than an Arctic zone and a middle school? Is that the point?
You have thirteen different buildings where you draw students from, but you also have that flexibility with staffing to follow the student. And then as, as Kane Jimmerball alluding to, so then you adjust based on what the class size moniker in the building would indicate and then what the sections of the buildings are.
So, anticipating there are really no scenarios where we're adding FTEs?
Again, it could, there's a lot, there's a multiplicity of scenarios that you could play out. Will there be some incurred staff cost? I would suspect if there's any, it's very, it's minimal. But it also depends on how we want to select students and move students to the, to the plant, too, to the dual immersion program.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm working hard to do better than a non-answer. But until we move a little bit farther down the road, it's hard to quantify that. But as we get closer, then we'll be able to put the ball more in the middle of the fairway for it.
Would it be safe to say that you, that it would be good to add that under like the board direction slide? When, when you anticipate that you'd have more detail in that vein and incorporating that in this piece?
Sure. And I think that might be part of the staffing updates that you request, the board requests as we move along, staffing nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. As that staffing is developed, I think this, this program will certainly be illustrated in its staffing model as well.
Let me just, let me just say a couple of things. There is a difference between staffing for elementary, kindergarten and staffing for secondary. So, with the elementary staffing, you have a set number of students in a grade level. You divide by the class size, you come up with a number of teachers. In the secondary level, it's a little bit more difficult because you also have to factor in a master schedule where people are moving around. So, there's the structure of the schedule. There's also the course offerings that students select, which can pitch class direction in different scenarios. So, it's much more complex at the, but we can do, I think probably the thing to do would be to look at the cohort we're anticipating at kindergarten in nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one and then estimate the number of kindergarten teachers we would need and see if that is a greater number than what we needed the year before.
I don't know if, because it's, because there's transportation involved in moving students potentially from multiple schools to a single school. I think that adds potentially some complexity unless I misunderstood.
It would add some complexity just as it does at Montessori because we have, you know, transportation issues there. So, it would be exactly the same kind of scenario. And having had the experience we've had with Montessori, I think that student transit will be able to pretty much give us an accurate or maybe, maybe an on-target cost once they see the students who have applied to the program. That's why we have this three-step process for you. Because if you get to a point where students are coming from all over the district and the transportation looks like it's going to be exorbitant to support the program, at that point, you may say, we want to put a hold on it until we have more funding or we have more applicants or we can, you know, do more staffing.
And then, yeah, I guess then finally on the topic of transportation, this, I, I think I, I heard you say that the forty-five thousand was kind of a, would you say that's on the kind of the worst-case scenario end of things?
Speaking with Jim Fry today, we ran through some transportation scenarios the best we could. Forty-five thousand dollars, he thought, would be the top end of any estimate they would have per year with understanding as you build capacity within student transit to move students around through this program and others. And you just have more volume of students, you get more duplication. So, you don't need an extra run at Manes, for example. And then that cost curve would bend. So, the first year or two, you may see more costs. By year four or five, it would continue down through the program, that cost curve would bend. There's also an option to do individual or private contracts with parents initially if you have really discreet or sparse enrollment throughout the district. There's, there's some arrangements that you can do with that to, well, make an arrangement with the parent to transport the student in lieu of using the, the student transit and save some costs there.
Okay, great. So, yeah, so seeing, seeing some of the, I guess really it's down to the, for the, for the next sort of decision point, for me, it would be very helpful again to see the, the costs of the PD and the money spent to date. And I think we can work on questions of staffing and blessing, et cetera. Yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
And because we don't meet until July twenty-third again as a board, when does the Budget Development Committee meet? Is it between now and then at least? So, potentially this, the budget implications could be something that's maybe discussed in Budget Development Committee to start?
We can also give you a written report of cost to date and some projections.
One of my questions, and it's kind of broader, just about this program as a whole. I, I, there's representation in your group from early childhood, right? From, okay. Who's on it from, is Heidi White? Okay. So, I'm wondering about that because I know that we're starting in kindergarten. We're not saying four K, we're not talking about early childhood. And to me, that's really the start point. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering what role you see that piece playing down the road in the future as far as like dual language program, dual immersion program in early childhood, specifically that kind of programming in our four K and providing toolkits to our early childhood partner sites and whatever else that could look like. Because I think that's a key part of this, is starting that early. So, I'm just wondering if you could, I'm sure that you've talked about that in your group, especially since Heidi's there. So, I'm wondering if you could just kind of bring us up to speed on that discussion.
Heidi would be a huge, I think, proponent of having that out at her site. Because when you look at research, the earlier you start, when you think of brain development and language, yeah, that would be, there's quite a few more hurdles to starting at the early childhood level. One, grant funding does not apply. So, all the grant funding we would apply for the Title III and bilingual, bicultural, we could not apply for with a four K site. So, we would have to own some more funding as a district if we chose to go that route. And then also, it would, the staffing piece, the human resource piece, it's not a very common licensure to see someone with the early learning and the bilingual add-on licensure. We actually visited Menasha and they did have a four K classroom and they actually had to close it because of, they had to use that teacher in a different grade. And that was the only person they could find who had all the licensures in place. It's not saying in the future that, that we shouldn't look at that as a district. I just think based off of like the funding and the grants moving forward, I think it, it makes sense to start in kindergarten. But we did talk about, you know, the early, the early childhood and the four K site.
Okay. Yeah. And so, is your, kind of once, once this program and, you know, and I guess assuming that everything moves forward as you have presented here, does your committee plan to stay intact to talk about pieces like that or talk about other opportunities down the road? Is that kind of the plan, that it'll be a standing committee long-term in the district?
Yeah. At minimum, this committee would be in place in total until you open the doors. Then you need an advisory or governance committee or whatever structure that we choose to land on, the board informs us on, which could be a subsection or derivative of this committee. But we need this group to help get us to either where the board says maybe not yet or the board allows us to go forward and we open up the doors, so to speak, whatever timeline that we land on.
Okay.
And another piece, you talk about committees. All the successful programs we look at have a really strong parent group. So, you know, moving forward too, we'd have to know that that is something we would have to establish and really support as well for this program to be successful.
You can think of the district's advisory committees that are in place. We have a, you know, a whole reservoir of those across the spectrum. You'd create something like that as well that incorporate your parents.
Oh, Commissioner.
I just have a comment. You are starting at the early childhood level because kindergarten through third grade is early childhood. We were just talking about preschool piece because early childhood is really birth to grade three. So, I just want to quantify that discussion for the board as well because, yep.
I guess, so I'm, so so far, the kind of two other pieces that have been talked about, you know, including some more information about money spent today at PD, looking at the budgetary piece. And then what Commissioner Beekah has asked about, which is specific to the criteria for the application process and talking more about that in, around July. Am I tracking? Is that so far what I've heard in terms of any proposed updates to this? Okay. The only other thing I would say is, and this is a promise, as long as I'm board president, I'm going to talk at least once at every board meeting about revenue. And I truly believe that innovative programs are one of those keys to increase revenue, if not our most important key to increase revenue. And I'll talk more about that as the months go on. And when I take the long-term look at this program, I think as years go on, as capacity expands, as you add on at the, at the earlier levels and at the, and at the later levels, I think that multilingual pathways, dual immersion programs, having them in our district would be a very valuable tool for increasing our revenue through increasing our enrollment. Because at the end of the day, having those programs would increase, I think, retention and recruitment of families from diverse backgrounds, period. And I also think the other aspect of this that we don't necessarily talk about, but that I think about constantly, is the very time in our country that we are discussing this program. And I've been in, in some meetings with our immigrant neighbors over the past several months talking about very scary issues that are facing them and their families. Folks are not necessarily feeling welcomed in our state or in our country right now, folks who are different. And very few other government entities appear to care a whole lot about that, about being welcoming towards our neighbors. And I think that doing this will be a way that we are, that we're sending that message. And I think that would set us apart in this very important time in our country. So, but I, but I really look forward to your continued work on this. And I, I think that the few changes that we've added to this process, I think will be healthy for it. But I really appreciate all of your research on this thus far. Do any other board members have questions or comments? Commissioner Harder?
I'd like to echo what you're saying. I mean, I'm really excited about this, this type of programming in the district. I think it's really important to keeping, to keeping Eau Claire vibrant. And it can really contribute a lot to that. And I, you know, despite the, clearly I'm laying out some budgetary concerns that I think we have that apply to all programs. And again, you know, I think we just came up with culinary a month or two ago. And the question then that I raised was, you know, how can we put this into context, this, this cost? And have a better cost benefit sort of framework to put this in as a board. And I think that problem, and I, I think I said at the time, if I remember correctly, okay, we'll do this one, but I don't want to do another one. And I think I saw a lot of heads nodding, but we're now moving into some others. And so, this is one of them. And we're not, I'm certainly not trying to single this one out. I love the idea. But it's a, it's a question of how do we put it into a holistic framework so that this decision and others that face us from a budgetary standpoint, we can make with intention and with eyes open?
Well, our committee appreciates the affirmation and the opportunity at least to continue to, to July, make another update to the board. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Torres and then Commissioner, how about Boyle?
First, I would like to acknowledge and thank for your work in the preparation of the materials to present to the, in the listening sessions. And then your leadership in the, in the listening sessions themselves. I was able to attend to two of them. And I think that the response that you received from the public was welcoming and enthusiastic. As an immigrant myself and having benefited from a dual immersion program, bicultural program as I was growing up in a different country, I can testify of the benefits of this kind of educational experience. And thinking in the long-term goals, I would say that we should, we may as well begin thinking about it as a program. But actually, it's an opportunity for us as, as a district to think about the challenges that this program will present to us in our whole curricular, curricular offering. After five years of children exposed to this dual immersion program, we'll have to be ready to receive them with more rigorous foreign language programs available in the middle, at the middle school level and at the high school level. And then hopefully also... And then hopefully also begin earlier with younger children. So that it's not just a, a program, but actually, you know, an opportunity to offer multilingual, multicultural education from earlier grades on. And that's a great challenge. And I think that you are up to the challenge, so, thank you.
We hope we have to react to that stimuli for our students, that'd be fantastic.
I just want to thank you too for your hard work on this. I, I, I see the, I see the board relative to our strategic plan and our budget, some work sessions about prioritizing some of this work because we can't do it all, you know? And really letting people know the long-range plan of our budget. And Eric, your point's well taken in the sense of how we have to keep thinking far enough ahead on the timeline, even though we only know every two years how our funding's going. So I, I, I think we're going to have to do some prioritizing ourselves as a board as to what is been presented to us over the last several months and how do we keep that going within a budget? I mean, that, that's something we're going to grapple with, yep, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public regarding this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on now to the ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, presentation regarding the implementation plan. Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, this is the other side of the ledger. This is where we bring money into the district with the Every Student Succeeds Act. Of course, anytime you bring in money from the federal government, it comes with some expectations. So we're going to give you just a brief overview. We did post, this is important, this, having this tonight was very important because we did post the draft plan from, it's called the LEA Draft Plan, Local Education Agency. Each district is required to have a plan, a new plan. We have not had a plan in this district since No Child Left Behind was authorized back in 2002. So, and back then, I'm not sure what format it was done and no one can really find it. And I asked the, our friends at DPI and they can't find it either. So every district has been in a new spot trying to meet the new expectations of ESSA. So ESSA is the, again, the Every Student Succeeds Act. It is actually the bill name that goes with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which originally was passed in 2015. So when it was, again, reauthorized in, in 2001, it was No Child Left Behind, now it's called the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so it gives, as you can see, more control to states regarding, and then the focus is on students of poverty, those of color, those that receive special education and with limited English skills. This is what we've seen in the past as we look at our detailed school report cards. When it looks at the gap groups, these are the gap groups. And so this is very consistent with what we've seen in the past. It is, ESSA actually is a whole suite of grants. I mean, you can see those listed there. They range from $17,000 to almost $1.8 million. So they're wide-ranging in their amounts. Also, part of ESSA was actually Title V and Title VIII, but that is really not part of any grant application that we receive. And you already did actually have a conversation a little bit earlier when you were talking, when Brandon was talking about Title II for professional development, Title III for language instruction. So those are just a couple that we touched on earlier. They are entitlement grants, so we are entitled them, but we have to shape an application to meet the expectations from the federal government. So there's 10 things that states must do, and this is a really interesting list. Because again, achievement is still primarily measured in ESSA through English Language Arts and Mathematics. Another primary measurement is graduation rate is also on there as well. So you can see, this doesn't look much different than what we actually experienced in the past. And finally, another one that they look at is chronic absenteeism. So math, English Language Arts, graduation rate and chronic absenteeism are the big, big ones. And the state goal right now is to cut those gaps that we have from those groups mentioned in the earlier slide, within six years, to cut those gaps in half. This is the other half of what states must do. Now, of course, this is at the state level and the state does have a plan. But then, of course, we have to try to apply this. And that's really what that local education agency plan was that we, that we have posted. So just to give you a quick, quick overview of those grants. The part, the Title I Part A is really about improving basic programs. There's a significant change, this one, in moving towards family engagement, not parent involvement. We're going to talk about this a little bit about next steps because our current policy, 811, talks about parent involvement. There's a significant shift, because parent involvement is really about parents coming to us. Family engagement is really about the district reaching out to families and to where families are. And also realizing that families are much more than a parent. So part of this is to really look at that policy, 811.1. We also look at a changing role with our parent advisory council to really, because we need a representative group from the district. So really, so getting feedback from all buildings. And so really working with parent advisory council to recruit membership that looks like a cross-section of the district. Because it also, it already has establishes each of our buildings, so we really need to work with them. And also start to bring some of the issues that we have to work through for our entitlement grants through, for feedback from that group. There's also a significant increase of tension, of course, on homelessness. And we have done a lot of work with our homeless coordination under the Student Services Leadership with Dr. Zhang in this area. And so we feel like we're on the right path when it comes to what they're asking for in Title I Part A in that area. There's also a very big effort on Title I Part D. And Title I Part D is, is students who are negligent, delinquent or at risk. Right now, Title I D funds part of our staffing at the, the Eau Claire Academy. And it also funds for math and English Language Arts instruction. It also supports the instruction that happens at the Juvenile Detention Center. And so part of the application talks about those transitions, both for special education students and for non-special education students. And really to ensure that students that are in those environments have a full access to the repertoire of programs that students that are not in there, are not in those facilities have access to as well. Title II is really talking about the preparation and training of school leaders. And so when we look at things like new employee mandatory orientation, our mentor program educator effectiveness, our professional development and instructional planning days, and professional development Wednesdays and targeted workshops, and our collaboration with human resources to try to meet the needs for our staff. That's all built within the Title II section of the, of the entitlement grant suite. Brandon has, has already spoken to many of the pieces in here about the Title III today. But you can see that our current program actually has four different programs types within two different program models. Again, going through, I should take a step back. When we went through this, we actually had a writing, we wrote the plan with all of these players and each one of these grants at the table simultaneously, so that they could understand how their pieces integrated with one another. And so we feel currently, if you look at the pieces that are in there in the Title III section, that our district is actually in very good shape in terms of meeting the expectations of that grant. And finally, there's this little grant. This is, this is a small amount of money that, that Title IV Part A was put out by the federal government, which is really about a well-rounded education. And it gave districts an opportunity to focus on one to three different areas. Which would be, one was mental health, the other is, is well-rounded schools, and the other's technology. As a district, we've recognized an increased need for mental health services. And using that small amount of money to partner with the grant that Dr. Hardbeck mentioned in her superintendent's report, to try to maximize the impact of that, the grant that she, she mentioned at that time. We're also in that piece, doing some pieces at the early learning level with a project called Group Therapy, where it's, it's a different model for mental health services provided at the early learning level that involves the family coming and doing some work and then the teachers actually conducting some of the work as well. And we're at the infancy in developing that model within the district. So using that small amount of money to begin the work in those two areas. The next steps in ESSA for us is to allow for, one of the things we need to allow for is public comments. So please let's make sure to allow for public comment. The document is there and it's a draft document, we have the, we have the ability to edit it. We just have to submit our, our final pieces to the Department of Public Instruction, their portal by the end of the month. The implementation, this can be facilitated through the district's multi-level systems of support. And you've learned more about, you've learned about that recently in the school improvement plan process. And also shifting an opportunity to, not for this coming year, but the year after. That process will allow, by each building using that process, will actually meet the needs and expectations for all buildings to apply to become Title I schools. Currently, the, what the federal government has done is they've opened a window. Right in the past, there was this 40% free and reduced threshold you had to meet to become Title I eligible and funded. That is being suspended currently. The reason for that is that in the past, your students' free and reduced numbers across the district would provide you the funding. However, the, the buildings that could access it were the ones with the greater free and reduced percentages. So we would have buildings, we have buildings like Robbins that has more free and reduced students at, at some points in time than the number of students that are free and reduced at Flynn. But yet their percentages are off. And so what happens by, by, we are, we disallow students in, in a building like Robbins from having access to resources. What we're doing is really looking at pooling those resources and trying to work as a group with principals and the parent advisory to really move resources to where the students are rather than where the highest percentages are. Because the highest percentages may not be actually the greatest number of students. So we have this ability to, this window is open for us to allow every, every building to have that access. And really have the dollars go to students as opposed to go to buildings. And finally, we recognize, and I can't make this up, that we'd really need to look at our policy, and that's not the part, the first bullet, on parent participation. We really need to relook at that to make sure it's consistent with the language. But in the legislation, there was also a piece where if we're going to accept funds, we have to put into policy that disallows text messaging while driving. And so I am, so we have to look at that in, exactly, in policy governance as well. So there's some language that we will share with the policy and governance group that only, that only could have been put in through a federal government writing process. I'm not kidding.
Is this on district time that we're, we're giving it on district time?
There's some specific language we will share with policy and governments and doing that type of work, exactly. So there's some parameters they have and we just have to figure out how to put that in there. But I'm glad, I clearly, I'm seeing that you're all paying attention because you, that didn't just slide right by, but yes, it is real. So we will share with you the language and then we'll work on that as we, as some of the pieces. And that's part of what we call our assurances that we have to meet. So that's the real quick skinny version on this. I would like to again reiterate, we had a large team, including everyone from our homeless coordination. We have the academy here, we had juvenile detention represented by Pete Riley. We had a lot of folks working to try to develop the first draft plan. So I'll take any of your questions at this time.
Commissioner Humbleboyle.
I'm just, you can tell I'm kind of on this tirade, so, and I testified at the Blue Ribbon Commission week or so ago. And I'd really like to know as a board member, you know, in our list of grants, those are all federal grants.
Right.
How much of our budget is dependent on those grants? Just because I don't feel grants are sustainable and they change. And as soon as they're not there, we're left with having to fund things. And I, and I know that, that a lot of those on the list have been there a long time. How long is the window going to be open as far as the changes that go with that? I mean, we're at, we're at the mercy of a lot of those kinds of things. And I'm saying that only so the general public understands that as well. And I'm going to give another example of a state grant, that 3.2 million for mental health. That's a competitive grant. Again, we're writing all these grants, are these grants competitive?
These grants are entitlement grants.
So that's.
So you simply have to write the application to meet the expectation. But your comment about, so they're as long as they are funded.
Exactly.
And we know that one of the big ones that is been on the block or in the crosshairs has been Title II because that's the professional development one. So we've seen that number decrease and it's decreasing again for next year on us.
But as we put in programs that need professional development, we're on the hook for that. So, and, and the mental health one for 3.2 million, that's a competitive grant in our state right now, which we're probably looking at. But that's a competitive grant with 422 school districts and all independent charter schools. So I just divided it by the 422 districts, not the independent charter schools. It's about $8,000.
And I did the same thing.
I know. Don't you do that now? I just want people to understand that and that we, we can as public schools be funded by grants. That's not sustainable.
So in this particular case, we know we're getting them as long as they are funded. And, and that last part, that, that last phrase is the part that you never really know what the funding will be.
So thank you, I just want to clarify that.
Typically, also that funding comes out after you do staffing.
Commissioner Harder.
Listen, Jim, I'm going to ask you to help educate me a little bit, if you can. You may not know the answer, but I've heard some concerns. I really liked your description of the Title I change from school-specific to district-wide. And it made a lot of sense to me. I've heard some concerns about that money being, you know, I'm sure you've heard them too, but I'm not sure I really, maybe you haven't, maybe you haven't.
So what, right.
Can you characterize those concerns?
So what happened in the past is, you have to fund at the elementary level and at the secondary level. So at the secondary, we have DeLonge and North Star, and at the elementary, we have seven of the 13 schools, our title schools. And so you have to fund each building per pupil. You have to make a determination on how many dollars to give. And then the, the buildings with a higher free and reduced percentage have to have equal or more per student than those that are lower. And so all that gets churned into a formula and then, then that dollar amount goes to that building. And then they are allowed to purchase services, which might be employees or equipment or supplies or other things to support student needs. So what you can have then is you could have, and, and all those schools are school-wide. So in other words, those services are, can go to any students there, regardless of income or need. But again, so if you're at Robbins, or if you're at Roosevelt, or you're at Davie, or a school that is not funded, none of those dollars go to that building. So you could have students who have significant needs, but they don't have access to those funds. And so the strategy has been is that right now, all those buildings have, they staff those buildings through, they, in the past, with their permanent title funds. And so they are continuing to staff those, those positions. And then all the limited-term employees and all the other supplies and equipments that, those dollars are being pulled back to the district. And then we're going to have a team make some decisions about where, and looking at the data and the same. When you looked at the school improvement plan and looking at the data, essentially that, that the data comes or is a needs assessment. And the team will determine where to best supply resources for students across the district. Where are the needs? And then try to have the needs follow students instead of buildings. Because if they just go to that building, then a student in the next building that has a need won't be able to access that.
Yeah, exactly. And as I say, I think that makes, like, that description makes a lot of sense, that yet I've heard concern and I'm, I don't mean to bring, you may not understand, you may not understand the concerns, I'm saying I don't, but I, I'm concerned that there's concern. And are we addressing it?
Right.
But if you're not, I'm not sure if you're aware of it.
We are aware, yes. And it is because you, because right now you have 20 buildings that, and nine of which have been able to access funds. And those same nine buildings will be accessing funds next year under this new model. So we're going to shift next year to how the model of, of how the governance of the dollars works. And then the following year, allowing all buildings to do the application to be part of the process. So that in, because one of the things, as we worked with our principal team, is they wanted to be able to have equitable access for all students to resources. And currently, not all students have access to them. And really, the only way to do that is to shift that, shift the funding to be at, rather than a building silo level, at a district level and have a governance team that really makes those decisions about how to, how to apply those resources across the district.
Okay, that's great, that makes sense, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? Commissioner Torres?
Thank you for the presentation, Jim. I would like to go to the Title II, Preparing Training and Recruiting High-Quality Teachers, Principals and Other School Leaders.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. And connect that to the need of our district to recruit teachers and school principals that have different ethnic and cultural backgrounds. When we post openings and go in the process, go through the process of recruiting or interviewing and then hiring, I think it's important to make more deliberate efforts to diversify not just the pool of candidates, but the pool of people involved in the process of selecting and hiring. As a way to more deliberately have outcomes that reflect those intentions. That connected to this effort to recruit high-quality teachers, principals and other school leaders. I think that while the land. I think that while the language of ESA doesn't include that, it would be a good opportunity for us to make those connections internally in the district.
I'm looking to my human resources. I'm not sure if, do you, is it?
I have shared that with.
Is that right, is it more of a, did you want a response or?
No, I was just sharing an idea.
Yes. I think that's consistent with some of our conversations we've been having too, so.
I don't see any other questions. I just want to thank Teaching and Learning, Business Department, Human Resources for, I know they've been doing a lot of work over the past several weeks or even longer on this ESA work. And I, just so that the board knows, we've talked in agenda setting, and there will be more detailed presentations, longer presentations about specific impacts that this will have. And those will be during our August board meetings, so we'll look forward to that information too. I don't see any other board questions or comments, but this is the opportunity now for public comment.
Need that public comment, thank you.
So any public comment regarding this? Of course, since the other items in August will also be committee reports, we'll have public opportunities there as well. But any public comment? Okay. All right. We will now move on to our discussion and possible first reading of Policy 411.1, Student Sexual Harassment. This policy has not been updated since 2000. We formed a subcommittee to review this policy, which included students and staff, administrators, parents. And they looked at sample language and also added some of their own pieces as well. The, there were some updated changes that were presented, shared with us from a university representative. But actually, none of those changes were to the policy, they were to the administrative rule. So my understanding is those changes have been incorporated in the administrative rule?
I think they're still working on it.
They're still working on it, but they'll, but they'll share those with us at a later date. But so the policy itself, we have up to review. And if there aren't any questions, we can go ahead with the first reading.
I have a question.
Yes.
We have not been able to finish our conversation in the PNG committee about the policy language yet. And I thought it was going to be, this was not going to be included in the agenda for tonight.
Well, we've discussed this policy. The part that we haven't discussed is the administrative rules.
The language that is here, my understanding, does not reflect even the language of the Department of Education as to what it understands as sexual harassment?
So the policy that you're looking at tonight, the vast majority of it is the sample policy that is recommended by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. So I know that they consult DPI as well as Department of Education or federal law. Are there any specific areas of this policy where you have a suggested change?
I don't have my notes with me, but what I recall is that the definition of sexual harassment, the language of the definition is not as comprehensive as the one suggested. So perhaps we need a little more time to tweak it a little bit.
Sure. Is that, okay. So we have a specific, so I don't, I don't have that information. So do you have that?
Yeah, I forwarded it like two weeks ago.
Okay. All right, so we'll flip that on the agenda for July 23rd to talk about it.
Thank you.
But I will say this. We wanted to have this updated for the handbook. So I would suggest that, frankly, that we look at the definition tonight that the Department of Education has, and we can just read it. And because we're not running that late, so I think we can at least do that tonight. If that's the only change that's suggested is the Department of Education definition, I think we can pull that up and just read, just look at that and incorporate that. I would be okay with taking it back to policy and governance, but I know that Secretary Iverson has said that they really want to get it approved so that there's some much more updated language for the handbook. So why don't we pull that up on the screen, whatever he, did you send it to her? Or where did you send that information to?
I sent it to, to the PG, PNG.
Okay.
Let me send this, I've got it up, I'll send it over to Patty.
Okay. So the definition, there's three definitions that are listed, and they're all different. The NCAA definition, the Department of Education definition, and then the UW-OKLA definition. They are all a little bit different, but we could, and I can, I can just, if you scroll down Patty, it's right in the body of the email, actually. Now, if you scroll down, it's right in the body of the, the three definitions are listed there. There's UWC, Department of Education, and NCAA. So you're specifically saying Commissioner Torres, the Department of Education definition? You'd like to see that more included? Okay, so the definition that we currently have in the draft policy reads, what it is defined as, the, it basically, it says it can include unwelcome sexual advances. Okay, that's unverbal. So I mean, you could, we could just paste that paragraph above where we further define sexual harassment and just include that and see what that looks like and see if there's areas of repetition and then go forward. The paragraph that reads, where it says Department of Education. Okay, so if we could paste that into the, and put it above the, okay, I'll wait until you're up there. Is it in Board Docs to edit?
It's a PDF, I'd have to go into the policy part of Board Docs, which I can do.
Okay, so we'll wait a minute to do that.
Just a second.
That's fine.
I can never see where that X is up there.
Okay. So we're up to the draft now. So where I'm suggesting that we just paste this is up at the, near the top where it's, read sexual harassment is defined as, just pasting it above that. And then seeing of the, of the, of the other aspects, if they need to still be there or, I know that the committee, I know that the committee deliberately wanted to include the language they included. And I know they were really thoughtful in that way. So I'm wondering if we can just include this Department of Education paragraph above their other language and if that would be sufficient for people. Do we want to read through the entirety, including this new paragraph and see how it reads? Is that fine with folks? Okay.
So we probably don't want it to say Department.
Right, take that out. Unwelcome. So, and really, when you look at our policy, it's potentially, it's more detailed than the Department of Education paragraph because it says, it's a range. It goes, I mean, it's very broad in what it should be defined as, where the Department of Education one is kind of vague. So I think it's okay to include the Department of Education paragraph as kind of a precursor, but I think including the bulleted stuff is important because it calls things out directly. And I think that that was something that the students particularly wanted to include deliberately. Correct me if I'm wrong, but. So why don't we read this draft policy? Is that fine with folks? Read the draft policy and see.
I think it would be disjointed if left as is. I hate to delay, but I do think they need to be integrated. So if there is anything unique about the Department of Education paragraph, it should be integrated. If you want to put it in the form of a bullet or?
So let's put it, so let's put it in bullets so we can say sexual harassment is defined as, first bullet, unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature. Right, is that what you're saying, Commissioner Beekus? Start incorporating it.
I'm just saying if there is anything that's truly unique about the DOE paragraph, then bring it in.
We're not taking this policy back. We need to get it done tonight and get it in the handbook, right?
Or just leave it out of the handbook.
Or we have to leave it out of the handbook, but I know that this is the first time in eighteen years.
Do you ever do, do you ever send information after? So often something is published and then there's a correction and the update is sent. Is that a possibility?
So the parent handbook is sent to all families. And from time to time, there are updates. The handbook is also online, and that can be updated. And a message can be sent to families, alerting them that an update has been made and the location of the update.
So, okay, if I look here at this paragraph, there's, it's, it's, it's two sentences. So the second sentence says, "Sexual harassment of a student can deny or limit on the basis of sex the student's ability to XYZ." I think that piece could be, Patty, I think that piece, you see what I'm talking about?
Yep, I do.
That, I think that sentence, the sexual harassment of a student can deny or limit on the basis of.
Put this back in.
So I think that can go above if we scroll up, so it isn't disjointed, where it says, "The district is committed to maintaining a learning environment and working environment that is free of sexual harassment toward or between students." And then it can say there, "Sexual harassment of a student can deny or limit." Okay? And then say, and then after that say, "The district shall not tolerate sexual harassment in any form." I think that would actually enhance that paragraph.
And the first sentence?
Commissioner Hambuck Boyle.
The first sentence is really already in the first bullets. It's very aligned with the first bullets.
So let's, yeah, so let's see here of this, now we have basically the, these next, the sexual harassment is an unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature. That's included in this first one, "Any deliberate, repeated, or unwanted verbal or physical sexual contact." That's even more broad. So I think we can remove that sentence, that's not needed. Now where it says, "Sexual harassment can include unwelcome sexual advances." So I think that's saying that remarks or actions that are sexually offensive or objectionable to the recipient or which causes the recipient discomfort or humiliation or which interferes with the recipient's academic or work performance. I think that that includes unwelcome sexual advances. Do other, do people feel like it's not included in that? Okay, so let's take that out. The piece here, it says, "Requests for sexual favors." So you could say, under the, under the piece here where it says subtle or expressed pressure for sexual activity, you could say comma, including, including, and then that piece. Now let's try this and then read it and see how it. Do board members have any further suggested edits beyond that? Does that look okay to board members? Basically, the, there are pieces where I think it does enhance to add like that piece right there. I think that that's strong. We incorporate, I think, one or two other things there. But I think otherwise, the policy language that that committee worked on, I think it's, it's good.
In that first paragraph, "The district is committed," I'd recommend adding "on the basis of sex." I don't know if that is and/or, but include gender in there, "on the basis of sex or gender."
Sure. "Sexual harassment of a student can deny or limit on the basis of sex or gender." Yep, okay. Are there any other suggested changes to this first paragraph here? So it reads, "The district is committed to maintaining a learning and working environment that is free of sexual harassment toward or between students. Sexual harassment of a student can deny or limit on the basis of sex or gender the student's ability to participate in or to receive benefits, services, or opportunities in the school's program. The district shall not tolerate sexual harassment in any form and shall take all necessary and appropriate action to eliminate it, up to and including discipline of the offenders." That paragraph seem fine with folks? Okay. I'll read these, just to get these, have our first reading of this section. "Sexual harassment is defined as any deliberate, repeated, or unwanted verbal or physical sexual contact, remarks or actions that are sexually offensive or objectionable to the recipient or which causes the recipient discomfort or humiliation or which interferes with the recipient's academic or work performance. Sexual harassment can take the form of any unwanted sexual attention, ranging from the following." And the bottom bullet is another area where it's changed now. Leering, pinching, patting, verbal comments, display and or exchange of graphic or written sexual material, electronic comments, photos, or other unwanted sexual materials/communication, subtle or expressed pressure for sexual activity, including sexual, including requests for sexual favors, and other verbal, nonverbal, or physical conduct of a sexual nature." Does that sound okay to everyone?
The first bullet, where it says at the end, "Sexual contact" would be a more inclusive, if we say, sexual advances or advance instead of contact, which could be understood as just physical contact.
Okay, so say sexual harassment is defined as "any deliberate, repeated, or unwanted verbal or physical sexual contact or advance."
No, sexual events. You say contact and.
Just say, instead of, just instead of contact, then, okay.
Move physical, right?
Correct.
Limits it too much.
Well, then if we're going to take out physical, then just say, "Any deliberate, repeated, or unwanted sexual advance," period, right?
Always.
Okay. All right. So let's scroll back down. Okay, so now I'll read this other section. "In addition to the anxiety caused by sexual demands on the recipient, sexual harassment may include the implicit message from the alleged offender that non-compliance will lead to reprisals. Reprisals may include but are not limited to the following: the possibilities of harassment escalation, unsatisfactory academic/work evaluations, difference in academic/work treatment, unwarranted comments to or by peers. It is the intent of the district to create an atmosphere where complaints shall be treated fairly and quickly. Any person who believes he or she has been harassed or has knowledge that a policy violation has occurred should file a complaint with the." has occurred should file a complaint with the building principal, or any trusted school district employee in accordance with the District's Sexual Harassment Complaint Procedures, 411.1- Rule. All harassment complaints shall be taken seriously and be properly investigated. Any staff member receiving a complaint shall immediately report it to the building principal. Appropriate action shall be taken to prevent or correct the harassing behavior, which may include referral to law enforcement. There shall be no retaliation against anyone for reporting harassment or cooperating in a harassment investigation. The District shall respect the confidentiality of both the complainant and the accused to the extent possible. Persons who engage in harassment or retaliatory conduct in violation of this policy shall be subject to disciplinary measures consistent with District policies and procedures. Notice of this policy shall be circulated to all schools and departments in the District on an annual basis, incorporated in student and staff handbooks, and included in educational presentations." Are there any other suggested changes, updates, revisions?
What does it mean?
Commissioner Torres?
In all harassment complaints shall be taken seriously and be properly investigated. What does it mean, properly investigated? Who investigates? Who determines that harassment has taken place?
Are you looking for that answer right now, from the staff?
Well, yeah, we need to say that here in the policy, right?
Do you want to add something to it, or?
Yeah, something's missing there.
Why don't we, I mean, maybe Mr. Schmidt could answer that?
So there are two different options, and one would be the Director of Student Services, but more, I think, the, where the committee landed was more toward the principal, because they're closest to supervising that behavior in the building.
So, do you, I mean, do you want it, do you want to add something to clarify it? Oh, Ms. Marks?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it usually in the rule that it indicates what the process is for the investigation?
Right.
Who's responsible for the investigation, and what the complaint procedures are?
Right.
So it outlines very specifically, this is, if you have a complaint, this is what you do, this is what the follow-up is, this is what the timeline is to do it. I mean, in, at least in the ones that involve employees, that's the process for that. So, it's usually in the rule where it gets very specific, down to details, nitty-gritty about how that process happens.
Correct.
And the policy part is more broad, in terms of, it will be done appropriately, and then once you get to the rule, it's very specific about how that's going to happen.
And it's referenced right before, so...
It does say that right here.
Commissioner Humboldt, blow.
And it's also specified in the, in the employee handbook.
This is for students?
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is students, but I mean, it...
Right, if we use 411 rule as an example, that's exactly what happens.
Right.
Would it, would it help to say, and be properly investigated as specified in the 411 rule, or something along those lines?
Which is, yeah, it says that right there.
Well, do we, I mean, you would just copy and paste the thing that's literally the sentence right before, in accordance with the District's Sexual Harassment Complaints. So if adding that would, would provide clarity, I think that's fine. I mean, if that would be helpful, we can paste that there. Okay, let's do that. Shall be properly investigated in accordance with, and then just put the same thing.
The committee also did provide us some preliminary language, I think you saw that, didn't you, as well?
Yes.
On those rules?
Yeah, you shared, you shared that with all of us. In policy governance. Okay, are there any other suggested changes or revisions to this policy? Is there any comment from the public? Okay. Seeing none, that will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting, then. And just to make that clear, that this, because it'll be on the consent agenda at the next meeting, but that's not till July 23rd, that this text will be sent to the handbook folks. Obviously, it won't, it won't show up anywhere until we voted on it, but it, just for the purposes of getting it printed, so. Okay, thank you. And thank you for, to the committee for their work on it, so. And now, we'll, we have, before we adjourn to work session, we'll have a request for future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items board members would like to request? Okay, seeing none. We will adjourn to work session, and we'll stay right here. Let's take a break, and we'll reconvene at nine, what? Right, we can make a motion then to adjourn and reconvene in five minutes, just so folks have a break to get refreshed before our work session.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.